Good afternoon, everyone. Let's call today's meeting of the Common Counsel Assembly Committee on January 14. Let's call the meeting to order. Please staff call the roll.
President Figueroa call?
Here.
Vice President Duncan?
Present.
Alder Gavender-Rajan is excused. Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Martinez-Rutherford?
Present.
Aldo Ugare?
Present.
Alder Harrington-McKinney?
Present.
Alder Curry?
Here.
You have court.
Thank you. So next on our agenda, agenda is the approval of the minutes from the last council meeting. Do I get a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by John John? Are there any changes, updates, feedback on the agenda, on the minutes? I'm sorry. Alder Curry?
Thank you, President. Just to, I would ask to recuse myself as I was not present for last meeting.
Okay, you don't have to recuse yourself or anything, but noted. Thank you. Okay, so I don't see any additions or changes, so we, um, is there a, is there a issue on recording a unanimous vote in favor of the consideration of the minutes? Any objections? I don't see any hands, so we got, we carry that on. Next item in our agenda is the public comments. Karen, do we have any public speakers?
The only person I have registered here is actually Alder Knox, and if Alder Knox, let's see if I see him. If Alder Knox attends, he's free to speak at any point in time since he's an alder, so we'll keep an eye out for when he, if he joins. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Karen. And next will be discussion, disclosures and recusals. We move on to discussions and recusals. Members of the body should make any required disclosure or recusals under the city ethics code. Are there any disclosures or recusals? I don't see any hands up. Thank you. We'll proceed. So the first item on the agenda for consideration is, um, agenda item 86706, special meeting, alder removal hearing procedure. This is a discussion item, so we don't, at this moment, we don't need a motion. So let's open the floor for anyone that has any feedback. We send this out a couple of times, asking for feedback. If you have any, any questions about it, let's hear them, and I will also, like, once we go through the questions, perhaps get an overview, or we can have an overview again and ask the questions. I leave it to you guys. I see Alder Duncan's hand is up, and I need to put you up.
Thank you, Chair. I had a question on the number one for the hearing prerequisites. When it states by a resident taxpayer, is that defined anywhere? And my only concern with that is just because, what if it's a high school kid or something that wants to report a concern? Technically, they would not be a resident taxpayer, and whether we could just say brought by a resident of the City of Madison instead of taxpayer.
Um, other, I mean Attorney Haas, I got the answer for this, but I'll let you have it. Well, it's on the statute, but I let you have it.
Yes, it is. That's the terminology in the statute, so I don't think we can change that. We did discuss that, and it is, it doesn't say property taxpayer, income taxpayer, sales taxpayer, so I think we sort of decided to punt on that until the question arose.
So, so I mean, I guess what could say, one could say that a high schooler going to the gas station to get a IC pays taxes, right? Yeah, so, so I think, yeah, there's no restriction, restrictions on that, so it's pretty broad defined.
But I also think it's not, like, settled. There's no case that defines it, so people may argue it.
Are there any other questions about, about the, the document? I mean, I still like to, to have a quick overview of it and clarify some concerns, if Trying to get back to my page. All right, so Attorney Haas, the one, I hate to put you on the spot, I mean, and I can, I can definitely go over this since we work together to, to, um, to build a document, but I have a couple of questions for you, maybe, and then we can, we can go from there. So can you again remind the body and whoever is interested on this topic of what are the, what is the language on this, on the statute defines? Like how, what, there's a very handful of things that the statute provides to us. Can you go over those and then explain, like, once again, what does that mean today with our process in place?
Sure. Um, let me just get the statute up here, see if I can remember the, you know, the, the, really, the only provision in the statutes is for, for specific actions that can be taken against an alder is removal of an alder from the body by the council, and that can only be done for malfeasance, neglect of duty, misconduct in office. There's a fourth one, uh, which I'll find. And so that, and that, and that statute also requires the process that's essentially laid out in the document. The statute doesn't have all of the details, so we, part of the purpose of the document is try to fill in the details about how a hearing would work or could work, and, so that's really the only formal process that's outlined in the statutes. As you know, the council passed a century resolution. That's not really outlined in the statutes, but it's just under the general authority of the council to be able to pass a resolution on virtually any topic it wants. So this is really more geared to the more formal hearing process to remove an alder.
So, um, in summary, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, the statute kind of defines the, who can, who can make a claim, and that person, it defines also that that needs to be filed with the clerk's office, or is that part of the, okay, so, so the person is to file with the clerk's office, office a verified complaint, which just means a sign affidavit, they have to post, post a bond with a bond agency outside the city, so that's not, they don't pay us the $1,000 bond, they do that with, with an agency outside the?
Well, they would post the bond with the city.
They post the bond with the city, but do they, how, can you explain that process?
Right, but that, let me try to find the statute here, but that, I believe that that is up to the council to require whether the bond is going to be required. So let me find here.
It says if order.
Pardon?
It does say in the document if ordered.
Is it statutory citation?
No, I don't have to.
Okay. So I was having trouble connecting to the city network, but I just got on here. Okay, let me, um, sorry, let me get to the document.
These glasses. So I, I have the statute in front of me, if you want to take a look at it.
Okay.
You got it?
Okay, so first of all, to complete what I was saying before, the, the cause standards are inefficiency, neglect of duty, official misconduct, or malfeasance in office, so that has to be the finding ultimately, and the two statutes are 17.12 and 17.16. And let me just get the procedures up here. Right, so, right, so the bond, it's, as we, as we outlined, it says collect the $1,000 bond if required by the hearing resolution. So the resolution would specify whether the council wants to require the complainant to execute a $1,000 bond, and that would be a security toward payment for the hearing costs, so that could be a judgment on an individual basis, whether the council wants to require that or not.
Okay, and then can you, so the other thing that the statute talks about is the having a, um, a record of the hearing, so it sounds like, it sounds like we cannot just provide the video, it has to be transcribed, they use those words?
Right, um, let's see here. Right, the statute, um, right, the statute does require a stenographer to prepare a transcript of the hearing for a potential review by a court.
Yes, in 17.16 AP, talks about that particular requirement. So outside of that, having a signed affidavit discussing the bond, and then the item needs to be transcribed, those are kind of the requirements that the statute provides from the, for the council to, to, um, to require, to be the prerequisite, prerequisite for a, for a hearing. And then if we didn't have this, if to date, we don't have a process to manage this hearing, does that excuse us from not having a hearing, someone request one?
No, if it's, if it's a valid complaint, then there, the statutes require a hearing.
And when we say valid complaint, can you define what valid means?
Well, somebody who's qualified to, you know, has to be a resident taxpayer, and, you know, I suppose there might be a, well, I think the, the statute presumes that there's going to be a hearing if there's a sworn complaint filed. It's theoretically possible that somebody might file a complaint that, just on its face, is not valid and not appropriate. I think it's an open question whether the council in that case could potentially say we're not even going to have a hearing. If they say, you know, it's neglect of duty because, you know, the, the alder bought a red car instead of a green car, something so landish that it would not even rise to the level, I think it's possible the council could say, even if this were true, it would not fit the cause standard, and we're not even going to have a hearing. In that case, potentially, the complainant could then file a lawsuit to try to force the council to have a hearing.
Okay, so but in general, if anyone comes in with a, files a complaint, sworn complaint unto the clerk's office, the clerk's office receives that, the council is obligated to provide a hearing.
Correct.
Correct. So this process that we're putting together is not, um, is not to start having hearings, it's just to be prepared in the event a hearing is required. So if we go back to the document that is on Legistar, um, the one attachment there, I don't know if you, um, I don't know if I can, actually, I'm not even going to show my screen, but the one attachment there contains the document that has the highlights of what is coming from the, from the statute versus what is coming from the recommendations that we are putting forward, and those are the ones that we are trying to get feedback from you. So, um, we are putting things in place that will allow us to have a cohesive hearing and to have a, to support serving whoever is, is, not only whoever is placing, placing a complaint, but also support the elders that are being, that need to participate on the hearing. And in this case, we, we do also make reference of if the complaint comes within, within the council, that is also possible, an alder can file a complaint against another alder, they are part of the city, they are taxpayers, and they, all they have to do is go down to the clerk's office and, and complete that, that affidavit. So having said that, if there's any other comments on this, I'd like to, 19, yep, other, Ugare?
Thank you, President. Do have a question for Attorney Haas. Is, is a decision by the body appealable by either the complainant or the alder to some court of jurisdiction?
Sure, just like any other decision in the council could be appealed to the court.
And as a follow-up, it just seems to me, but I may be wrong, that by including a fairly rigorous procedure for the hearing in this ordinance would lessen the likelihood of a, an appeal that was successful.
Yeah, I think we always look at two aspects, right? The, the actual decision, the substance of the decision, and then the process and the procedural safeguards, and so it helps to the extent that we can remove objections based on the process, and establishing a definite process certainly helps us to document that it was thought through and that the process was approved ahead of time.
So having this procedure would probably be more effective than a, a future common counsel trying to develop a procedure on short notice?
On the fly, I, I agree. Just gives you, gives the council time to, to think about it in the context that's removed from any specific individual case.
And then, could you just review one more time the obligation to have legal counsel or the opportunity to have legal counsel either for the complainant or the alder?
Right, so either, either party can proceed on their own or have an attorney, and so that would affect how the hearing is conducted, because if there's an attorney, the attorney would be the ones, the one asking the questions rather than the complainant or the alder.
Thank you, Attorney Haas.
Thank you. So Attorney Haas, does that meet, oh, I'm sorry, I, I ask after Alder Curry, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, President. A question, just because I feel really rusty, and I'm thinking, like, history of things, so, um, oh my gosh, and I'm struggling with a headache, so I'm losing my memory. Oh, during, I feel like this last term, I know that there's an ethics commission, or I forget the, the full name of it, and I hadn't seen as many complaints since come before that body. Could you explain the difference that that body would be from processes involving an alder, if that makes sense?
Sure, sure, yeah, it's a good, good question. The, the city has an ethics code in section 3.35 of the ordinances, and that establishes the ethics board, and that's a board that would hear any complaints regarding any city official, elected or staff member, where there's a complaint that they violated the ethics code. The thing is, the ethics code, in a sense, is fairly narrow. It largely deals with doesn't, does a city official or staff member have a financial conflict of interest, or are there, are they using their office inappropriately for a private benefit? So, you know, obviously, alders recuse themselves or disclose on the record if they have some interest in a matter. If there was a, an alder who had a conflict and it was, it was significant enough that they should recuse themselves and they did not, somebody could file a complaint. Or if an alder or a city official tried to use their city position to financially benefit, I mean, the most severe example you could think of is just outright bribery, you know, those would be violations of the ethics code in addition to potentially being a criminal violation. So the ethics board, in fact, we, we pretty much rare, we rarely have complaints filed, which is a good thing. We rarely have actual hearings in front of the ethics board. There is a recommendation from the ethics board on the council agenda tonight, but that's really all the ethics board has jurisdiction over is the ethics code, which is really different from, we're talking about removal from office, it may or may not be something related to, to the ethics code. When you think of misconduct in office, that could be related to the ethics code, but when you talk about neglect of duty, you know, that may just be completely neglecting the job of an alder and not really a financial conflict. So does that answer the question?
It does, thank you.
Thank you, Alder Curry, Alder Harrington-McKinney, you're next. Is she frozen? Alder Harrington?
I recognize.
Thank, yes, you are. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, I apologize for the delay. Attorney Haas, I have a question in the developing of the process. Is there a gag order or a disclosure? What covers that process so that it is, um, go, I hope that you understand what I'm trying to get at.
I, I think so, Alder, and I think the answer is no, the statutes do not contemplate that this is a confidential process or that it's done in closed session, it's an open hearing, the complaint would be a public document. The statute doesn't talk about any restriction on people making public statements about it. It's a, it's a, it's an item on the agenda like every other item on the agenda is in an open session, so there, there isn't any, uh, provision in the statute that would allow the council to order the parties to have a gag order, as you say, or be subject to a gag order?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder. Okay, so, um, I guess at this point, Attorney Haas, what, um, I would like to have this process again codified, not just to be a standard operating procedure, I just would like to, to be like we do codify any other statutes, language into our ordinances. So what are my options here? What recommendation do you expect for, from this body to get this going?
So I, I think there are a couple of options. If, if, if you want to have it codified as an ordinance, we can essentially convert these, this draft procedure into an ordinance. It's, um, and I, you know, I don't think it's, just looking at it here, I think it's, it's detailed, but I think it's all appropriate to have it in ordinance. I mean, the state, it essentially fills in the blanks in the statutes, so we have a lot of ordinance, ordinances that, you know, basically incorporate what's in the statute, so we could, uh, we could draft it. Now, the only, um, you know, kind of the pros and cons of having it in the ordinance is, I guess, your confidence in this should be the procedure in all cases, because then you're kind of bound by it, and if you get to receiving a complaint and you think that maybe the procedure should be tweaked, you can't tweak them in these, as easily unless we could have something in the ordinance allowing for allowing for adjustments to the process. If you do a resolution and you wanted to change the ordinances, that would just require a new resolution.
I mean, but if we wanted to change the ordinance, we also just have to make the change and get it through. So is there, how many, I mean, to create an ordinance, which is just a legislative document, we just need 11 votes, a majority to the council? And will there be, just out of curiosity, where would this land? In which book of the MIGO? Which chapter? Would this be under council?
I think under council procedures, yeah.
Okay. All right, just out of curiosity. I see that Alder Harrington McKinney has her hand up. You can unmute yourself, please.
Thank you. So this is again for Attorney Haas. Attorney Haas, is there a sunset period that this would cover? Let's say if we have an alder and they are elected and they serve a particular term, and with this ordinance in place, can that ordinance go back to day one?
I'm not sure I understand. What ordinance go back to day one?
So we're talking about an ordinance in place. I mean, if the ordinance was in place for removal of an alder, would that cover? Is there a look back? And I don't know how to frame it. I just want to see if there is a period of time where there terminates a look back or that goes from the beginning of an elected term up to the present? That's the best way that I can explain.
Right. So if, well, first of all, there's the statute in place, so any complaint that's filed now would proceed under the statute and the council could, you know, lay out these ground rules before holding a hearing. But if this was all put into the ordinance, it would apply for any complaint that is filed from that point on after the ordinance is in effect. And at this point, we do not have any, you know, pending complaints?
Thank you for deciphering my question, even though I was trying to, it was not clear, but you got to the point that I was trying to clarify.
Thank you, Alder Knox. You're next on the queue. Thank you, Alder. Alder Knox, you're next on the queue.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. This is for Attorney Haas. I guess I just need to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. So this procedure, is it not related to the statutes in terms of removal based on cause? Is this more related to our code of conduct or am I interpreting this incorrectly?
I would say, yes, you're interpreting it incorrectly. So this--
All right. So you want to clarify that for me?
This, right. This is related directly to the removal for cause. This is just an attempt to help fill in the blanks that, the details that are not included in the statute. So this would be related to attempting to remove an alder from the council. It would not be related to, for instance, an ethics board hearing. Under the, the ethics board can make recommendations to the council to find the subject of a complaint or recommend removing them from their position, a committee member. The ethics board cannot remove an alder from the council.
Yeah. Yeah, I realize that. I guess I was related to in your covering memo, you say, "The memorandum does not address the standards for removal of an alder, which is a finding of cause." And then you define that under statute 171001. What did you mean by that statement?
Right. It's been a while. Let me just read this again. Yeah, so I think what I was just trying to say there is that the focus of the document was really on the process. This was not an attempt to elaborate on what the standards for removal were. In other words, it does not define inefficiency, neglect of duty, official misconduct, or malfeasance in office. Those are not defined in the statutes and we did not like provide a bunch of examples of what conduct would meet those standards. It was just to focus on the process.
Okay, because that was a little confusing because then you add the attached draft procedures are a continuation of the efforts to clarify options behavior, which really was kind of related to APM 3-5. I didn't think under that we had any options for removing someone from the council. I thought you would always have to defer to the, you know, the state statutes to do that.
Right. I think, as the memo said, it was trying to help, continue to help clarify the options. That's all. I mean, there's been over the last several years, several cases where we've addressed what are the options for the council to address behavior of alders? And so this was just, I was just saying that this is a continuation of that effort to clarify more specifically what the procedures are when the council attempts to hold one of its members accountable.
Okay, so you're just giving us a draft of procedures to follow--
Right.
--that would be consistent with the state statutes to do that.
Exactly. Exactly.
All right. Thank you for that clarification.
Alder Knox, do you have anything else?
Nope. That's sufficient.
Your hand's still up. Thank you. So Attorney Haas, I think in addition to the, I mean, is there a way, I would like to see a way to incorporate on maybe on the draftress analysis or even on the ordinance itself, some language that clarifies that we have APMs, we have a code of conduct, we have the ethics board, and any complaints will be reviewed to see those bodies are the ones that hold jurisdiction over the complaint? Because someone can follow the direction from the statute, but the complaint can clearly be covered under the ethics board? We should be able to say this is not this body, we have a body to manage that. So some kind of language to define the, you know, that points to the code of ethics for the council, the APMs and the ethics board, they're all different bodies. Well, there are different processes to manage complaints. This is not, this should be like the last, when the complaint doesn't fit any of those buckets, what do we, you know, a hearing is an option for that. And it follows the requirements of cause and per se.
Yeah, I think the question, if we do that though, is ultimately if the complainant wants to file a complaint to remove an alder, I don't think the city can dictate that they have to go to the ethics board instead.
So, well, I guess I get your point on that, but perhaps just have it clear that what is the end result of this? I mean, we have an ethics board that manages specific issues, you know, like the 50-piece rule or whatever, right? Like whatever. So removing an alder from the 50-piece rule, that doesn't, you know what I mean?
Yeah, we can maybe have some language stating that somebody on city staff can advise the complainant about what the options are, at least to make them aware that there's different avenues they could take. So that's something we can work on.
Yeah, because I think even for the council body, when we introduced this ordinance, I, part of your memo to introduce it, which would be great to again define those different options, what does that mean for, to make sure that people understand what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay.
All right, so are there any other questions in the room or on the Zoom? I don't see any hands raised. I really want to thank Haas and his team as well as Karen for working on, really trying to establish what a process would look like. We still had time to submit up feedback. This is not a, you know, it's not an ordinance yet. So if you have any additional feedback that comes to mind, please review the document that is linked online. It has reference to the, what is the part of the statute versus what is just the ordinance. If you have any feedback on regards to the additional changes that we are putting in place to accommodate a fluent process, reach out to Karen and we'll pass that on to, we can pass that on to Attorney Haas and he can tell us what is the best way to approach that particular change. Alder Harrington McKinney, you're on the queue with another question.
Thank you very much, President. I'm glad that you made that last summary because from what I've heard today, I'm still not very clear on what we're trying to accomplish. And so I'm going to go back and read everything that has been sent out. And I'm glad that you did open the door for us to be able to better clarify what we're trying to achieve. And I think that that is so critically important as we're looking at processes. And it shouldn't be a process that is not being consistent. And so it gives us enough opportunity to really delve down and clearly understand what we are trying to achieve. And so I thank you for that opening. I'm complete.
Thank you, Alder. I appreciate that. And definitely consistency is what we're trying to accomplish here and to be ready if this were to happen in the future. So we don't need a vote for that, but I just want to kind of direct staff for this particular agenda item. But I just, again, Attorney Haas, if we can just keep moving on codifying this document. Sorry, I'm not, I'm just talking to myself, I guess. So thank you, Alder. And yes, we will, we are looking for consistency and to be prepared for any issues that may arise in the future. So from this particular agenda item, we're just going to have Attorney Haas proceed with defining, writing the ordinance or putting in an ordinance format. So with that said, Alder Harrington McKinney, your hand's still up? Okay. All right. So from, with that said, we can move to the second agenda item. I don't know if our presenter is here. Hold on. Let me, is he there? Give me one second. Need to get to there. Okay, why can I find my agenda? People, there it is. Let me see. No, that was not it. Open it again. Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is an overview of the neighborhood resource teams. So Tarek should be on his way, so I'm just going, if he's okay with the body, I'm just going to have move to agenda four and five real quick. Are there any other committee updates that will give Tarek a minute to set up? Do we have any committee updates that you guys want to share with the body? Hopefully you guys also the news, we have a new assistant, we have a new interim chief, Assistant Chief Patterson, he will be covering there to, once Chief Barnes is, comes to his last day. And I see, and actually I don't have any updates for committees myself today, but we can go back to agenda item 386696, an overview of neighborhood resource teams. And we have Tarek on the line to help us. So I don't know what, if he's presenting or how that goes. So Tarek, take it away.
Evening, folks. I know most people, but for anybody that I don't know, my name is Tarek Sakhaf. He/him, I coordinate neighborhood resource teams and work on the city's racial equity and social justice initiative out of the Department of Civil Rights. So can I present screen? I've got some slides that we can run through. So I'll go ahead and do that in a moment. But basically what I'll do today is just kind of give an overview of neighborhood resource teams. I know most people are familiar and I also know that not everybody necessarily is. But we'll kind of run over briefly the way they work, kind of how they operate, what are some of the dynamics, and then touch on some of the current goings-ons within them in terms of adjustments and then hopefully leave room for whatever conversation you all want to have. So in terms of the neighborhood resource teams, they've existed since really 91. They've come in a few different iterations. But the primary, the mission is, they've always been a racial equity tool for the city. I don't think that we've always had that language and so that hasn't been as explicitly stated as when I came into my position at the end of 2012 and like made it kind of the cornerstone of what the neighborhood resource teams are really about. So the mission is about promoting racial equity, improving quality of life for everybody, and making sure that we're tuning in to what's actually relevant for people that are living in areas with neighborhood resource teams. When we talk about the goals of the teams, so much of it is about relationships, both between and among city staff as well as residents and other stakeholders. There's a lot of focus, of course, on coordinating, developing, improving city services. But the primary piece is really the relationships and what goes with that and kind of creating a space where who knows what's going to happen? What goes from there? Making sure that we're tuned in to what's going on with people, what's going on in different areas, what the challenges are as well as what the opportunities are. And then the way we think about it is not just focused on areas with neighborhood resource teams, but recognizing that there are broader themes that extend across the city and using those opportunities that we learn from neighborhood resource teams to make broader citywide and system-wide changes. Okay, so neighborhood resource teams are, they're a different bag, is the reality. And they go against the culture of a lot of frankly, Western society and governmental bureaucracy. They're not the checklist of we will now do 1, 2, 3. Sometimes they are, but they're in a amorphous space. The biggest thing that they do is that they create a space where we can be there to connect with each other on more of a soul level, where we can develop relationships, where there can be collaboration, where there can be constructive conflict, all sorts of different things. And so what we do is, we have our meetings regularly. Meetings are not the only manifestation of neighborhood resource teams. I think that's an important thing to recognize. But we have our meetings and we go in with a pretty broad series of questions to really open up the space to say, what do we need to be talking about? And from the answers to those questions is where the agenda for both meetings, conversations, as well as the agenda for change starts to emerge. But all of that is a little bit different than the ways in which I think a lot of things typically operate. One of the big things is, and this was there much more at the beginning, is as these teams are about quality of life, a lot of people make assumptions about quality of life, about what dictates quality of life. And they kind of, there's an easy tendency to apply our own values to those of others and talk about how people should be living as opposed to tuning into what is really relevant for people themselves. The way we talk about neighborhoods and about people is often a challenge. We perpetuate stigma. And that's one of the things that we try to do with these. I mean, we, I've heard it crassly put, like, these are in bad neighborhoods. And that's not necessarily the reality of it. We have challenges in all neighborhoods. These are areas where we see higher concentrations of people living with lower incomes. With the racialization of poverty, we know that this is where we see people of color living that tend to be renting, that tend to be disconnected from other systems of power. None of that makes it a bad neighborhood. What makes it, what brings up challenges is oftentimes the vulnerability that goes with it and the ways in which there can be-- it and the ways in which, um, there can be predatory dynamics within property managers and property management housing. But the stigma that ends up getting perpetuated sometimes inadvertently by us and by others is, is one of the dynamics that shows up. Another challenge is that people sometimes see neighborhood resource teams as, um, the panacea and the end all be all. And boy, if we have got, if we've got an NRT there, we shouldn't be experiencing any problems, which is typically overly reductive and simplistic and not like representative of how things work. And our Ts will not be the things that get rid of poverty, but they can address things. They can tune into what the issues and the challenges are for folks and serve as a catalyst and elevate needs, uh, in ways that, that don't otherwise happen without the teams. Being overly inclusive, like this is a big part about of, uh, kind of principles around equity. Sometimes being inclusive means being exclusive. It means that just because we have, um, just because we've got a number of residents. I'll hold off for a second. There we go. Just because we've got, uh, different, um, demographics and so on, like we really are focused on these teams as orienting around racial equity. And, um, so when we start talking about residents that are renting, that might be living with lower incomes and tend to be people of color, that tends to be the focus for us. And it's not necessarily about bringing everybody together and, and working on some of the more affluent areas as well. If more affluent residents want to be in solidarity with what we're trying to do to promote, uh, racial equity and improve quality of life for people that are in, um, some more challenging circumstances, perhaps, that's great. But the focus remains, as I said, about racial equity and, and really working with, for the folks that are historically the most marginalized. Uh, the creative helplessness is, you know, come, we've gone through some different ups and downs with neighborhood resource teams. And sometimes we get stuck in this space of like, but what are we doing here? And, um, and it's, as I said in the beginning, it's kind of challenging sometimes for people to really sit in a space that's a little bit less defined. And neighborhood resource teams are less defined by definition so that there can be flexibility with them. And sometimes that's challenging for those of us that want things to be a little bit more precise. And so sometimes folks that are looking for that precision can end up spinning wheels a bit. We've seen these started off, as I said, in 91 with Mayor Soglin. When they went to Mayor Baumann after that, they shifted pretty radically. They lost the neighborhood focus, which means they lost that focus on equity and specificity. With Cheslevich, that remained. When Soglin came back in, uh, they again went back to that neighborhood focus. And with Mayor Rhodes Conway, she's maintained that neighborhood focus. And so this transition has really been the best one, um, in terms of not losing the focus and direction of neighborhood resource teams. But that, that will always just, that'll be a question. Uh, and they used to be, uh, really operated by a deputy, before my position, deputy mayor was running them out of the mayor's office. And so of course that, there was huge mayoral influence with them. I think there always will be. I think it's important that there remains that connection. But my position was in the mayor's office, as folks know, um, for the first eight years and then moved about four years ago into the Department of Civil Rights should, which should both help to, uh, which should help to kind of stabilize it in some ways. But I think it is again, important to still have that connection between, uh, electeds and, and the mayor. Okay. So again, bottom line is these are about racial equity. They live on the dignity of people. This is fundamentally what they're about. Uh, making sure that we're not perpetuating stigma and, and like getting in the way of that, interfering with that. And then really thinking about, this is what public service looks like. We're still working on putting together some results from the survey and so on that we, we did. But one of the things that came out that was really lovely for me to see is there was such a strong response from so many city staff about how they felt like this work was really why they got into public service in, in the first place. This is a huge part of where they got to see themselves doing the kind of work that was actually important to them, um, and that they wish they could do more of. Okay. So looking at it slightly different way, NRTs are bringing people together. They're working on relationships. They're figuring out what's important to people. And they get things going. They really, this is one of the primary functions of neighborhood resource teams is they serve as catalysts. They get things started. Neighborhood resource teams themselves will not be the doers because we try to get the right departments, the right agencies, the right people to be doing the right things, ideally in the right ways, but we can get things started. And so sometimes those are, those are huge things like starting a funding area or, uh, promoting a construction or a parks rebuild. But sometimes they're much smaller. I mean, one of the things that I think about that I love the most was simply when we did a listening session some years ago out at, uh, in Meadowwood, one of the things that the young people talked about was the bounce of the basketball hoop. And so that was a, that, that because there was a double rim that parks had started to put on playgrounds so that the rims lasted longer, um, that that was compromising the fun of the game. And so one of the things that they were able to do, like within the same week was go in and, and replace the hoops. And so that was, uh, it's a small thing, but we know that the residents, teens in particular felt that change and, and appreciated it. So we connect the dots. It's, it's been a huge part of our culture change. At the city of Madison, you know, a lot, when we talk about neighborhood resource teams at other areas with other municipalities in the country, one of the things that's clear with all those groups that have initiatives where they're working on racial equity. Our neighborhood resource teams give us the space to make some of those changes a little bit more readily to put it into action in ways that I think have perpetuated and like helped our progress on that front, um, kind of take off a little bit more. And so the two really do go hand in hand, the racial equity and social justice initiative and the neighborhood resource teams. We never talk about professional development within neighborhood resource teams. Uh, that's not the, that's not the focus. But beyond the, um, you know, probably a hundred and twenty city staff that are assigned to different teams, we've got 11 teams right now. And we've got varying numbers of staff that kind of participate in different ways. But we've probably had over the, um, wow, 12 years now that I've been doing this, about 70 different individuals serve as co-leads for the team. And that experience where they get to serve as co-leads and tune into, uh, how to run these teams, learn how to prioritize racial equity and all the work that they're doing, learn how to think across systems and across departments, has been a huge, huge professional development opportunity for the city. And I know that when staff go in and they interview for other positions and many staff have gone on into management positions, even department head and division head level positions through, um, that, that used to serve as co-leads for the neighborhood resource teams. I know that one of the things that they talk about a ton within their, their interviews is the experience that they got from these teams. And so it really is going to kind of solidify our employee base as well. And I talked about the creating space, that that's one of the primary functions of the NRTs, even though it's not, again, not really something that we articulate, but it is, it is, uh, um, a really important element of how they tend to operate. We know housing is, is paramount in the city, across the city. It has been, it will continue to be. And it's not just, uh, the amount of housing stock, it's the way in which property is run, the way in which it's managed, uh, the responsiveness that tenants, um, or that property managers have to tenant needs and then the, all the fears around retaliation. All of those dynamics continue to exist. Everything that's associated with people living with lower incomes and, and people living in more impoverished situations, all of that is real. When we were in the middle of the pandemic, the, all the aspects around digital literacy and the, um, food and, uh, other supplies that, that came in, like those are, those are all real and big and important. And there are smaller items too, like we've talked about in terms of just, um, being able to be in the neighborhood, enjoy your park, enjoy walking around, having a an ease of life that, um, sometimes we don't necessarily think about because we're so focused on some of the bigger, bigger picture items. Talked about property management and stigma. And, uh, I think that last part is, is tremendously important. It's shown up at the very first NRT meeting that I went to, uh, back in December of 2012. It's part of the genesis of Parks Alive is that people want to be able to come together and hang out and be in community with each other. And that's something that we need to recognize is a priority. That led us many years ago to the creation of a funding area called Community Building and Engagement. We don't have it anymore. It was, um, absorbed when, um, there's a reallocation of just kind of how some funding went through the community development program. But that is an area that we'd like to look at again, uh, at getting going, um, figuring out how do we support residents and coming together and organizing in, in different ways. Obviously, community centers, community facilities are a huge deal. When we look at the different, let me see, I want to say this. So one of the things that I noticed when I came in, um, and after being here for a few years, is that we kind of had three categories of teams. We had areas that used to have teams that no longer did. So that was like Wexford Ridge, that was Vera Courts, that was Truax. We had areas that did not have neighborhood resource teams back in the nineties, but like, when they got going again about 10 years ago, 12 years ago, uh, now they did have teams. So that was areas like Park Edge, Park Ridge, Hammersley, Teresa, Leopold, Arbor Hills. And then we had some areas that used to have teams and continue to have teams. That was Allied, the South Side, as well as, um, Darbo Worthington. And this was the difference. The difference was that the areas that used to have teams that no longer did, all had strong community facilities at their core. Truax has the East Madison Community Center. Wexford has Luscher Community Education Center, Vera Court Neighborhood Center. The areas that didn't have teams but now did, all of those either were talking about needing a community center like Leopold or had one that just came online, like in Balsam Russ at the Meadowwood area or Teresa Terrace. Those, those, uh, centers have been there for a while, but those team, those areas just got, uh, community facilities as we were getting going in part through the neighborhood resource teams and then in work that had gone on before that. And then the areas that used to have teams and still do, all of those are kind of these, they're kind of these confusing situations. So we've got Allied where there is the Boys and Girls Club, which is, uh, a facility that gets funding from the city, of course. Uh, but there's still sometimes, and even though like we talked about it and we continue to try and navigate this and the Boys and Girls Club works to, to bridge some of the gaps, there still has historically been a little bit of a gulf in terms of what the residents feel and what the center is able to provide. And part of that goes back even to the charter, the Boys and Girls Club. Salvation Army exists within Darbo Worthington, but doesn't necessarily feel like that community facility to the residents that actually live there. And then of course, there's on the South Side, we've got historically, um, you know, there are lots of organizations there that have their headquarters, but we haven't had that facility that really operates for the people of the South Side. And so that shows up. And even as we get going now with these two new teams, the East Madison Community Center, or not, sorry, not the East Madison Community Center, the East Milwaukee Street Neighborhood Resource Team, as well as the Sandberg Team. One of that things that we're already talking about is, boy, we know people need community facilities and we know that that provides an anchor for the neighborhood. So all these other areas we can, we can talk about, these are other things that have come up through the neighborhood resource teams, the traffic coming, the parks is huge. We've gotten multiple positions started through the neighborhood resource teams, whether that was the Parks Alive Coordinator, the PIO that the council brought in last year, or it was teen specialists at Warner, teen librarians at multiple libraries. We've also gotten positions created at the county on the gang response intervention team through recommendations that came through the neighborhood resource teams. So a lot, we, we put our recommendations out there usually every year and we kind of cut across the board, which is one of the things I think that's nice about the neighborhood resource teams, that even though they operate out of Departments of Civil Rights now, I think that there's an overall neutrality that they have. So that's what I got, uh, in terms of the presentation. A couple of other remarks, like I ref, made reference to the counts or the, uh, the survey that went out, um, last month or, uh, six weeks ago or so is we're still putting some pieces together with that. There weren't any big surprising findings that I think came out of that. Everything was pretty much as expected. But we will have more to say about that, uh, before too long. And then the other part is we're working on tweaking the boundaries. So I'm currently working with staff from Public Health as well as the UW Applied Population Labs, which, uh, is contracted through the city to work with the Neighborhood Indicators Project. So I'm working with Dave Long to pull in a lot of, um, subject matter expertise and, and get some real recommendations on how do we need to tweak those boundaries if we do at all, uh, and how do we, how do we keep going forward? But those maps, uh, should hopefully, um, I'm hoping that we'll have a preliminary draft within the next several weeks, but, uh, we'll be getting finalized as more data comes his way to this spring. So that's what I got and certainly have time for whatever time you have for a conversation or comments, questions.
Thank you, um, Tarek. I am going to pass the microphone to Alder Madison real quick here.
Well, thank you, um, President Figaroa Co. First, I just want to say, uh, thank you to, um, for the presentation and for all of your work too on this because I know, uh, we went back and forth, not really back and forth, but you know, we talked for a couple of months about creating a neighborhood resource team in my district. But I just really want, if you wouldn't mind just sharing an update, so any other authors who are seeing this, you know, in replay, for example, about the importance of having the Sandberg Motel Corridor Neighborhood Resource Team.
You want me to say why we ended up screening?
Why and where we're at now, because it's fairly new. We've been meeting, there's a good group of people on those meetings, but just the importance of it, because I don't know that there are other NRTs that also encompass like a motel area, for example.
Yeah, the motel, the motel part of it is, is singular. So let me, um, I know you're asking about that specifically, but I, let me just run through the teams that we got, um, just so everybody knows. So we had nine teams going from west, kind of extending through. So that included Park Edge, Park Ridge, Hammersley, Teresa, Balsam Russet, moving into Allied Drive area, Leopold Arbor Hills, South Madison in general, which really focuses around Badger, Bram, Cypress, Bar Oaks, but it's, it's the South Side, um, in some ways. And then, uh, Brentwood, Northport, Owl Creek area, and then Darbo Worthington. And then in the past couple of months, we have gotten going with two new teams. One of those is East Milwaukee Street, which really focuses in on the apartments of the Meadowlands and the Harmony. And then the last one that Alder Madison is, is talking about right now is the Sandberg one. And so Sandberg is an area that we know for, for years has been under-resourced and is, there's just not a lot there in terms of assets and amenities. And really the neighborhood resource teams, um, we've had a lot of conversations recently about data and how do we look at data? And people always come back to, we want to use data to, to define where the teams are. And, and every single data expert that I have talked to in and outside of the city of Madison, um, scratches their head with how to approach the question, just like they do with other kind of similar things, trying to figure out like where do we put, where do we put some, some resources? Because it's, because the data that we have doesn't necessarily translate to automatically saying this is where we should go. Because it goes down to measures of vulnerability. You know, that's, that's a huge part of it, like how, it's not just simply the demographics of people, it's really about this vulnerability aspect in terms of what kind of supports do people have and what kind of supports do people need to be able to have a degree of resilience and to be able to have a place to turn and to be listened to. And, and really, um, when we think about Sandberg, there's just, there's just not a lot out there, period. We're going in with the Imagination Center. That's obviously going to be, uh, a huge investment in the area, which hopefully will make a real difference for folks, um, and the way in which we orient people out there. But, uh, for the longest time, they haven't had anything. So, um, that's one aspect. And we know that we've heard from, uh, folks in the neighborhood, from the schools, this kind of question for a while, if we could come in and, and locate there. When we decided to go out there, what was abundantly clear is that we know that, um, we've got that strip along East Washington Corridor, the hotels and motels, which are the, the housing of, um, you know, it's, it's kind of the end line for a lot of folks in terms of housing and what, what they might need. And a lot of young people that are, um, that that's, that's where they're living and attending Sandberg Elementary. And so we want to make sure that we included that corridor as part of the team. And so that team is, is functioning, kind of having, uh, a focus on these two geographic areas, one kind of a little bit more around Rindell Park and Sandberg Elementary, and then this other part as we extend, extend out, um, onto East Washington Corridor. And I think that's going to mean a lot of different things for how this team evolves and how it operates. We are literally, I think we just, um, we're in our first three months. So a lot of it is emerging and will continue to emerge as that team gets its, its understanding of its identity.
Thank you.
And what its focus will be.
Thank you, Alder Madison.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So thank you. Um, Alder Knox, you have a question?
Yeah, um, we, maybe more comments, but I can end with a question. So. So Terry, one of the things that I think, and I participate in the South Madison team. I think it's an opportunity where the research teams provide a lot of provide and share a lot of valuable information from the different service providers, whether they're city service providers and other providers. So I find that to be a very valuable asset of sharing that information and discussing situations. I've I've always kind of felt on the negative end. The resource teams aren't as effective in resident engagement. And I definitely want you, Tarek, to comment on that. Partly because there aren't any many residents there, okay? And we meet during the day and that's typically not when a lot of the residents are around to provide feedback and that. And then, but I think partly that's not just the resource team's objective, but it's partly the orders. We also have these other entities like the neighborhood associations. Some are functioning, most of them are not very vibrant, planning councils and other groups. So I guess, Tarek, I'd just like you to kind of comment on on, you know, some of those difficulties and and maybe how we can approach that better. I will have one other little comment. Yeah, we've had some some surveys and some lit surveys, but there's a point where I think our neighborhoods tend to get oversurveyed or oversampled. I don't know if that makes any sense, but perhaps you could comment on that as well.
Yeah, let me get a little bit more clarity on that second part. Are you just talking about in general, like that that's a comment? Or is that a comment in response to something from the NRTs?
No, I just think in general, the research team provides very valuable information to service providers. And I'll clean myself. Okay.
I was thinking about the survey part.
I don't think, and not just the research team, but any of us get. We all could stand to be better at resident engagement. And and I'm just trying to figure out how the resource team can be more effective as well as those other groups at at getting to some of that resident engagement.
No, I got those two parts, but you had your last comment was about surveys. And I was curious what you were talking about.
Well, I know the university group has did some surveying recently. I got, I finally got some feedback from them on their past survey. I think that was last summer and engaged them and they shared some of that. And then I heard you today talk about some more surveying. And so generally, there's quite a bit of surveying going on, but I don't know how much of the survey results and data are coming back to to the community to know, you know, where we can drive some of that that data or information. Does that make sense?
That's that helps. Thank you. So so the first part, I would not say that the NRTs are struggling with resident engagement in the way in which you're talking about, which is not me saying that they're not, that that's not a place that we need to look at. So the neighborhood resource, there was a point during the presentation where my remarks, where I said that the NRT meetings are just one manifestation of the NRTs. That is not and should not be the entirety of the neighborhood resource teams. So the neighborhood resource team meetings themselves are miserable places for residents to engage. Like if we were going to design something in a way in which to engage with residents, NRT meetings is not what we would design. And so we know that. And that's not, that's not what those meetings are for. Those meetings are gatherings. Residents are absolutely welcome if they want to attend. But that's not the design. And even going back historically, before I started in my position, those meetings were just city staff. And so historically with neighborhood resource teams for this first, I don't know however many years, from 91 to 2012, they were just meeting with city staff. And so one of the big things that we did was open it up and say like, really, it's important for providers to be there, for other community stakeholders to be there and residents, if they are able and interested, they're they're again absolutely welcome. All of that does not absolve us from the responsibility to connect with residents in ways that work for residents and in ways that they want to be connected with. And so that then goes to the struggle that we've had of late. So before COVID, before we went to Zoom, we were doing a much better job of having community suppers on a semi-regular basis with a lot of the teams. That is, and that was one of the ways, it was the primary way in which we connected with residents on a regular basis, got to talk to folks, got to tune in directly to what and have some conversations about what was important and and got to tell them a little bit about what we were doing based on what we had heard from them before. And the reality is, it has been more challenging for us to do that in a lot of ways since COVID. I think in large part, just because it's it's harder to rally people, you know? Everything has moved on, so many, so many things have moved online. And so the way in which a lot of us are interacting with our work is is now is now Zoom-based. And it's just harder to get people out to do a community supper from a from a staff standpoint. And so that's something that we continue to look at. It's something that we want to continue to work on. We've got a few different ideas about how we might approach that from having resident liaisons that actually do go back to even as much as I was talking about that the the NRT meetings themselves aren't a great place. We might be working on a resident liaison model to do that. We continue to talk about and work on figuring out how to do, go back to the community supper model and using those as a way to connect with residents a little bit more. And also finally Parks Alive, which NRTs were a huge part of getting going. How do we maximize those kind of spaces so that that we can have resident engagement in in different ways? So resident engagement is is still very much a area of focus for the teams. But I want to be clear again, NRT meetings are not the place where we're trying to do that because we know that that's just inherently, it's not the most hospitable place. It's not the most, it's not going to work for residents in the way that it should. If we're going to be connecting with residents, we should be doing it really focused on what is going to work well for residents. And so that's a conversation that we are continuing to try and push forward. As far as the last part in terms of surveys, the survey that I was referencing was a survey that went out to city staff and stakeholders that are involved with the NRTs. And so that was emailed out to all the recipients that get NRT emails and attend NRT meetings. And so that was not an survey of residents or anything, and we will be reporting out on that. But I mean, I will take a moment. I mean, I have a little bit of a different take as someone that's worked, been working on public participation and resident engagement and this kind of work for a long time. It is a common thing that all of us, including myself, say that the community is oversurveyed and that they receive surveys all the time. And I don't really have any issue with contradictions. I think that's true. And I also think it's true that I have never found. I've never encountered someone, a resident, who seemed to have any issue with having a genuine heartfelt conversation with me. You know, when I was going and having a conversation with them, which may be what a survey sometimes feels like. You know, and so I think that what people are tired of is that dynamic where nothing really happens. One of the things I think that is important is that when we do have conversations, that we're able to lead with who we are and what we're doing and why we're having this conversation and what's come before and what's going to come from the conversation and that we follow up. So I don't think it's ever really what we do that matters, of course. I think it's how we do things and how we show up, how we show up in community. I think NRTs, I think one of the most wonderful things about NRTs is is NRTs are they, there's so much of separation between government and community. You know, we talk about these as different entities and they are. NRTs give us the opportunity to be part of the community. I genuinely believe that. NRTs are part of the ways in which we show our soul from this. All of that can exist. And so the survey part, I hear you. But I also think it's a, this is a primary way in which we are able to connect with what's really important to folks. What's important is that we don't leave it hanging and we don't tend to do that with the neighborhood resource teams. We go back and we stay in a constant state of conversation ideally, which is part of what we do when we do the community suppers.
So I guess I would just, can you give me an example of, just give me an example of how the NRTs impact communities? Give me a, can we find your example to say, here's an example, not the meetings, here's an example how the NRTs have positively impacted a community with a project or with an event? Or can you give me, can you share something like that?
Everything that we do in terms of generating the recommendations based on what people are talking about. So that, as I talk about that very first meeting I went to in December of 2012 in Allied Drive and I'm listening to Sienna Davis and Selena Pettigrew and Alice Howard and we're talking about just how people want to be able to come together and connect with each other in community and how important that is. That conversation was part of the evolution of Parks Alive. It went and it turned into, even though we had Let's Eat Out, it turned into Meat Needs. It turned into Movies in the Park. It turned into being carried forth in the spirit that went into like really get Parks Alive going. That's one example, but it shows up all over the place in terms of every recommendation that we've put forward to build to build parks in Allied, to build parks in Owl Creek. This is one of the primary ways in which NRTs are and have been one of the primary ways in which we take what residents articulate, turn it into recommendations about what the city should be doing and bring that into reality.
Thank you, Alder. Tarek, I, you know, I have three NRTs, so I kind of I'm an expert on how they operate, I would say. So I, I, we are running out of time, so I'm not going to ask any questions. And we know we have ongoing conversations and I'm looking forward to the survey of the the latest survey that we that we sent out. So having said that, thank you so much for sharing what the NRTs are with the rest of us. We'll definitely have some follow-ups with you later. And thank you for taking the time to be here today. And with that said, IT is already getting a little bit anxious. So I am going to, I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn if anyone cares to that. And a second, please? John and Joan's second. Thank you. So see you guys in a few minutes at the council meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Can we, is there any objection or recording a unanimous vote and adjournment? Nobody dares to do that. Great, great. So we are adjourned. Thank you.